Hello, thank you to all who came out last night to the Watson Lake Community Wildfire Protection Plan Town Hall that we hosted. We're re-recording this presentation for those who didn't make it out. And so today we'll be discussing the proposed fuel management plans to reduce wildfire risk in the Watson Lake and Upper Leard areas. And we're looking for your feedback after the presentation. So we'll be providing some contact info so you can reach out to us.
Casca Denon people have lived on, used, and cared for the lands and waters that we all currently call home for many generations. Casca people have rights and title in their traditional territory and have lived alongside wildfires since time immemorial. We want to acknowledge that both Casca Denon people, as well as other Indigenous folks that live here, and the settlers who live in Watson Lake and Upper Leard, have a deep connection to this place and a strong desire to continue to make it a safe place to live. We are really grateful to get to work with you all to better prepare our community for future wildfires and to learn to better coexist with wildfire. So in this presentation, we're going to introduce ourselves and some key, uh, key knowledge about wildfire, wildfire behavior. We're going to show some examples of fuel management in the Yukon and explain what community wildfire protection planning does and what the basic steps are. Lastly, we're going to present our proposed three-year plan for fuel management in Watson Lake and Upper Leard as part of our community wildfire protection plan. And then we would open the floor for feedback from you. And so please get in touch after watching this presentation. We really want to make this a community-based plan based on feedback from the community.
In the way of introductions, my name is Randy Mitten. I'm the Regional Protection Manager for the Tintina Region, based in Watson Lake.
And I'm Georgina Preston. I'm the Wildfire Outreach and Implementation Specialist. In a temporary position that might end in May. And a primary part of my role is to move our community wildfire protection plan along in Watson Lake and Upper Leard. Before we get started, we want to be very clear that not all fire is bad fire. We live in the boreal forest, and in the boreal forest, wildfire is a key disturbance mechanism. It creates diverse habitat for various kinds of wildlife and different ecosystems for different types of plants, all of which we rely on as people that live in the boreal forest. There's also more direct benefits to people. Anyone who heats their house with wood knows that after a wildfire, those areas are really great for collecting dry firewood to heat our homes. And if anyone hunts moose in the audience, it provides really great habitat for moose. You could be able to spot moose eating, regenerating willow and other shrubs in past wildfire. We see a lot of death a lot of the time. A lot of black poles where trees used to be, where forests used to be, in birthplaces in the Yukon. But from that death, it's sometimes not very soon or not very, um, long after, we see a lot of life emerge. And that could be from plants and animals returning to the area. Wildfire has this amazing ability to release more nutrients into the soil. Fire can even trigger the release of certain seeds from different plants or trees that allow them to grow back quickly after a wildfire. And more light is able to reach the forest floor, leading to the growth of different plants and, uh, and trees. It's also important to note that Indigenous people throughout the entire world have burned and are still burning the land for many different reasons. We call this practice the application of good fire. It's very old. It's usually based on place-based knowledge that has been passed down for generations. And some of the reasons that Indigenous peoples are burning could be improving game habitat in important plant growth areas, so medicinal plants, food plants, insect management, reducing wildfire risk for their communities, uh, improving sightlines, and so much more. It's important to note that after settlers came to North America, a lot of settlers have continued the practice of applying good fire. And Yukon model and fire management applies good fire through the application of prescribed fire for wildfire risk reduction in the spring and fall throughout the communities. And we'll talk more about prescribed fire later in the presentation. But it's a really important tool that we have and one that, um, is very useful in the boreal and is something that the boreal forest relies upon. We personally don't know much about whether Casca Denon people have applied good fire in the past, or if, or if they did or not, uh, but we'd love to learn more. So if that's, uh, something that you know about and you feel comfortable sharing, please reach out after this presentation because it's a very important part of understanding wildfire history in this place and how we move forward in a good way.
So as Georgina discussed, wildfire is a really important mechanism of change in our boreal forest. But fires can be a problem when they threaten communities. So there's lots of recent examples of this in the last 10 years and some that hit really close to home. For example, the 2018 Lower Post Fire, um, is probably our most relevant example. We also had Telegraph Creek that happened in the same year. Last year, or last fire season, we had Jasper burn. And most recently, um, you know, we're having a lot of, a major fire happen in Los Angeles. So, um, fires are getting harder and harder to fight for many reasons. But to understand the fire risk around Watson Lake and Upper Leard, let's first talk about what contributes to fire behavior. So we call this the fire behavior triangle. Uh, and it's composed of three parts. There's fuel, there's weather, and there's topography. So fuel is all the live and dead vegetation. It is anything that will burn. It's the trees, the grasses, the logs, the sticks. And when you get close to communities, unfortunately, that can include, uh, homes and infrastructure. The second piece is weather. So the most important factor of what we consider when we talk about fire weather is the wind speed and direction. So that'll tell us how quickly a fire is going to move and how and what direction it's going to move. But it also, it also involves some other things like the dryness of the, of the given day, uh, the temperature of a given day, the amount of rainfall that's fallen. And all of that impacts the, the dryness of the forest or the fuel. And then we have topography. So, um, is the area flat or steep? Is it hilled? Um, what direction do the slopes face? All of this impacts how a fire is going to burn across the landscape. And so it's important to consider. But what I really want to hammer home is that, uh, we have no control over the topography of an area. We have no control over the weather in, of an area. But we need to focus on the thing that we can control, which is the fuel. It's changing the composition of the, the forest around us or the landscape around us to be able to be more resilient to fire.
So that leads us to fuel management. What is fuel management? It's basically altering the vegetation out on the landscape, perhaps reducing it or changing how it is spread out, changing what type it is, all in the name of changing how wildfire would spread if it burned into those fuels. There are four main goals of fuel management that you should be aware of. The first is to clean up dead woody debris and dead grass and other, uh, needles and, and small, um, dead vegetation on the forest floor. And we want to do that because that can lead to fires burning quite hot and gaining intensity. We also want to increase the gap between the forest floor, where that dead wood is, where the needles are, and, and wildflowers and shrubs and lichens, and the height of the lowest branch, um, of, of needled conifer trees. We want to do that to ensure that fire does not move, uh, from burning along the understory of forest into the crowns of trees. Next, we want to create gaps between the crowns of needled trees such as pine or spruce, which are most relevant to the Watson Lake and Upper Leard area. We want to prevent fire from spreading from tree to tree within those needled, uh, needled conifer trees. And lastly, we want to retain more fire-resistant vegetation. And we have fire-resistant vegetation on the land already. It happens to be leafy deciduous trees, so aspen, poplar birch. They have more water in their wood and their leaves than in needle trees and are far less flammable. So retaining those trees on the landscape is really important for changing how fire can spread across it. To get more specific, um, we are trying to prevent fire from spreading from the ground to the crowns of trees, as I said. So a lot of the time in the Yukon, um, fun fact, 80% of our, our ignitions in the Yukon for wildfires are from lightning. But when we do have a fire get away from a campfire pit or a cigarette or something, some burning around your house, it's usually going to start off in the understory of a forest. So along the surface fuels in those dead woody debris. We want to prevent that fire from climbing using sticks, wood, tall shrubs, small conifer trees into the crown of, uh, needled conifer trees where it could spread quite quickly. The fire that's burning in the understory is usually less extreme in its behavior. It's, uh, less hot. It's easier to fight. And we call those, uh, fires surface fires. So we want to remove the ladder fuel that allows fire to climb from being a surface fire into the crowns of trees, what we call, um, a crown fire. And if fire has already gotten into the crowns of trees, if it's coming towards a fuel managed area, we want to prevent fire from spreading between the crowns of needled conifer trees. And so, um, another specific goal of fuel management is to space out those conifer trees so that fire can spread less easily horizontally through the forest. And when fire gets into those, those crowns, they're exposed to more wind. It can travel, uh, faster. It's a lot harder for firefighters to respond to. So preventing the start of a crown fire or the continuation of a crown fire is a huge goal of, uh, fuel management. So fuel management keeps, uh, in an ideal world, keeps fires burning as surface fires in forest understory. It doesn't burn as hot there or spread as quickly. And for larger crown fires that are already burning hot, fuel management can slow the spread. It can, um, less continuous fuel will slow the spread of a fire spreading across needled conifer trees. And as I said before, this makes it easier for firefighters to respond and safer for them too. It buys them time to protect a community. So what does fuel management actually look like in the Yukon?
So there's a good, long history of fuel management that's been done across the Yukon and in the Watson Lake and Upper Leard areas. So this first one is probably what you would recognize. This is a light forest thinning, uh, or you may know it as fire smart. It's typically what's done closest to homes. And we have lots of examples. Uh, this has been done in the Watson Lake and Upper Leard area since the, the 90s, early 2000s. So, um, this is work that's completed by hand crews. And shout out to the Leard First Nation, a local fire smart crew. They've been working away in this area for years and, and contributing to making our community safer. So, um, what we're doing in these treatments is taking the smaller trees, the unhealthy trees, uh, and we're removing them as well as the tall shrubs. And then we're piling them on site and burning them. So trees in, in these treatments are thin, so there's, there's five to eight meters apart between different trees. And then the wood is typically left on site for community use. People can go pick it up as firewood as well. We're going to be pruning the branches to two meters higher, as high as a sawyer can reach. And then what these treatments are doing is reducing the chance of surface fire burning into the crown of trees and beginning a crown fire. Uh, and just a note is these treatments are expensive because it takes a lot of time to get, uh, a crew of people in there to do this work by hand. Another type of, uh, of thinning that's done in the Yukon is a more intense forest thinning. So this is where we're going in with, with either a combination of, of chainsaws and typically with heavy equipment as well. And we're removing even more understory vegetation, taking out all the small conifers, all the unhealthy trees, removing those. And then we're leaving just the large, healthy conifers and large, healthy deciduous trees behind. The spacing is even more drastic, maybe six to eight meters between trees. And sometimes, uh, equipment will go in afterwards and mulch, uh, all of the, the forest floor. And so we're mulching all the fuel that's been removed, leaving it on site. And then potentially we can come back with prescribed fire later and finish cleaning it up. These treatments are cheaper, faster, more efficient because you're using mechanized equipment. And typically the operator or the contractor coming in to do this work can keep some of the wood to reduce the cost of the treatment for Yukon government. These are very difficult. Uh, in these treatments, it's very difficult for surface fire to climb into the crowns of trees and become a crown fire. And it's also hard for crown fire to spread from tree to tree. But to note, it is still possible during extreme windy and dry conditions. Another type of treatment is, is the most effective, and that's where you remove all trees when you're clearing. Yeah, you may know this as a, as a cup locker or conventional logging. So i- in the Watson Lake and Upper Leard areas, think of the, the north fire break and the south fire break in town. Or we have some walking trails. Um, you can also look at this picture. This is the south fuel break, uh, just south of White Horse. And so what these treatments are doing is creating a large gap between the flammable forested areas on either side. It makes it difficult for the fires to jump the gap and there's no chance of a crown fire happening in the cleared areas. What these clearing treatments do best is it provides a safe spot for a timely response by firefighters. So it's far easier for firefighters to get in and have a safe space to work. In these treatments, all the trees, all the understory plants are removed. And sometimes again, uh, mulching can happen and burning with prescribed fire afterwards as well. These treatments can be replanted with aspen to make a more fire resilient forest for the future. And these treatments are the most cost-effective. And doing a more cost-effective treatment allows us to be able to do more area for fuel management. So prescribed fire is a really important aspect of fuel management. And typically, prescribed fire treatment would follow a fuel management treatment. So you do your fuel management first and then you can maintain that treatment with prescribed fire. So we only do prescribed fire under very specific weather conditions, to make sure they stay safe and make sure that they stay contained. So we need it to be hot enough and have enough wind to have the fuel be dry and have the fire spread, but not so hot and windy where the fire would escape the treatment boundaries. So, um, typically those conditions come around in the spring and sometimes in the fall as well. And these fires are going to be moving through the treatment area, consuming small twigs, needles, bark, leaves on the ground, and leaving less fuel behind to burn during an actual wildfire. So when there are less small fuels left on the ground to burn, the fire that you can expect to go through that area later would be less intense and far easier to fight and it wouldn't spread as fast. And doing prescribed fire is highly cost-effective because instead of having a, a hand crew go in and do the work, we're having that fire do the work for us. So another note is with a prescribed fire treatment, you can have a boost in nutrients in the soil, uh, which can make for really good growing conditions afterwards. And so another aspect of, of fuels management treatments could be a conversion of the stand. So, uh, where, this is where we would, um, come in and do a fuel management treatment and we could plant that treatment afterwards with aspen. Because aspen have more moisture in their wood and their leaves, um, often they can drop a crown fire down to a surface fire. And so, uh, these forests are much less flammable than your needful, needled conifer trees such as pines, bryce, and fir. So if we were to go into an area, clear it, burn it, and then plant with aspen, that could be a really effective treatment to create a, a landscape level, uh, fuel break. So aspen also provides a different type of habitat that's really valued by a lot of different wildlife. And so having these aspen patches on the landscape can really help the slow fire spread.
And that brings us to community wildfire protection planning. So yeah, we're going to go over kind of the different stages that we've taken so far in creating this draft plan that we're proposing to you today. And a lot of it involves, uh, getting to know the area, getting to know the people involved and what values are out there to protect. So we're going to talk about some of our community partners in, uh, in Watson Lake and Upper Leard. We're going to talk about, um, learning about the fuels, weather, and topography around the community to understand potential wildfire behavior, uh, what the potential risk is from wildfire based on those factors, and learning about what areas there are around the community that need to be protected from wildfire. Using all of that information, we have created a kind of an informed, uh, strategic, uh, plan for, uh, fuel management, which, um, we're hoping to get feedback on from all the community members in Watson Lake and Upper Leard. First off, um, having community partners makes these plans a lot more successful. We must work collaboratively with local people and use local knowledge so that the plan is relevant and will actually work for this community. So our community partners for this project so far have been in the town of Watson Lake, including the Watson Lake Fire Department and the Leard First Nation. However, we are open to include more groups or organizations if you believe we are missing someone vital in the creation of, of a community wildfire protection plan in this area. Our next step was learning about the fuels, weather, and topography that influence fire behavior here. This is a map of different forest types around Watson Lake and Upper Leard. The orange on the map is, uh, representing forests that's mostly mature pine. The red is representing black spruce. And the light green is representing a mixed conifer and deciduous forest. Given the amount of orange and red on the screen around Watson Lake and Upper Leard, we can see that they are surrounded by very flammable fuel types. It's that needled conifer trees that are, are very flammable.
It's also useful to know where our summer winds come from because that's going to dictate what direction a fire is going to spread. So this graph here shows the dominant winds. So the center graph of the, of the three is the summer winds. And you can see the biggest piece of pie is on the west. So that means your winds are coming from the west and we would be pushing a fire to the east. So therefore, we wanted to prioritize putting the guards on the western side of town to be able to ensure we would have a, a better fighting chance of stopping something coming from that direction. And based on the flammable fuels that surround Watson Lake and Upper Leard, we predict that there's high wildfire risk for these communities. So on the map in front of you, red is an area of high risk, orange is moderate, and green is low. So as you can see by this map, there's a, a lot of red, uh, and not a lot of green. So this is, this is something that's concerning, that we're surrounded by high risk, but something we're hoping to address with the CWPP.
Another key part of community wildfire protection planning is understanding where and what to protect around the community. So where are the values? Where are the things that we care about on this landscape? It could be homes. It could be infrastructure. But it could also be important and special ecological locations or cultural areas. I will note that Randy here has a wonderful inventory of what kind of values exist on this landscape, including the location of cabins that would need structural protection in the event of a wildfire. And this is just a map that kind of shows clusters of areas that we know have values. And, uh, we are really hoping that we can get some feedback from you all. If we're missing areas that you believe should be protected close to the communities or even a little bit further out, we're always keen to hear. Because if we don't know what's out there, we won't know to protect it. And this brings us to choosing where to strategically place fuel management around Watson Lake and Upper Leard. So we know where the dangerous flammable fuels are around the communities. We know where the wind is most likely to come from during the fire season. And we have an idea about where we'd like to protect in, in around the communities. Another factor that we consider when making a plan and, and choosing the locations for fuel management is that we want to make, um, cost-effective fuel management decisions. So that means reducing costs for treatments could mean tying in existing roads and access management areas. Where we, where those already exist will be much easier for operators to go in and complete or implement the fuel management treatments. So that's something to keep in mind, um, when we present. What we present in the next slide are proposed areas for fuel management.
So keeping all that stuff in mind, uh, here are the proposed areas for fuel management for the next three years. They're shown in pink on the map. And I want to note too that green on the map is all the previously completed fire smart treatments in the Watson Lake and Upper Leard areas. So, uh, this is one of the aspects that we're looking for your feedback tonight on, uh, is the location of these treatments. So, uh, this is just the beginning. This is just the, the three-year plan. We are hoping to do more in the future. We're already dreaming big about what we could accomplish in a longer timeline. But this would be, you know, the start that would happen over the next three years. And I also want to note that all the pink areas were proposing a clearing treatment, except for number eight, which is near Upper Leard, near Albert Creek, and circled in yellow on the map, uh, we're proposing an intensive thin in that area. And we're looking for feedback on our method, uh, as well. Or if, uh, if you wanted any other kind of additional interventions, uh, like a replanting of aspen, replanting of medicinal, uh, plants or, or berries in some of these areas. And so we'd love to hear from you and get some feedback post-presentation. Yeah, please reach out to us if you have anything to, to say. And also, uh, it's worth noting that fuel management does not work alone. So, uh, in extreme weather conditions, uh, these treatments are not going to stop a large, fast-moving fire that's already burning really hot. But what they do do is they give firefighters a lot easier access, a safer place to work, and a better chance at stopping the fire. So, uh, what we could do with these fuel managed areas is we could use them to, to start planned ignitions, to do more prescribed fire, to build off of and do more thinning in the future. And so ultimately, uh, these treatments will help firefighters to be able to protect the community. And also it's worth mentioning that there could be consequences to not completing fuel management in the Upper Leard and Watson Lake areas. There's been a lot of instances in the last 10 years of catastrophic wildfires that have impacted communities. And although in many cases there's extreme weather conditions that are contributing, uh, to these destructive events, they still serve as a warning, uh, and, uh, of what, to what our communities could face in the future. So doing the fuel management work ahead of the wildfire season gives us a much better chance of being able to catch the fires during the season. So in the event of a wildfire approaching the community without having, uh, conducted fuel management, I would be contracting heavy machinery to clear the same areas, but I'd be doing it in a rush. It wouldn't be the same time to consider environmental or cultural values. And likely the time wouldn't be there to be able to do all of the area as well. I'd be prioritizing, um, the most important areas to do. So there's a chance we'd have no time as well to put in a fuel management or fire breaks during a wildfire emergency if the fire started very close. And in those cases, uh, much like many of the other cases across North America, Enterprise, Telegraph Creek, Litton, Fort McMurray, Jasper, most recently Los Angeles, it's, it's possible that we could like, likely end up losing homes or community infrastructure.
So that brings us to the benefits of these treatments. The benefits of fuel management, first and foremost, is better preparedness for a wildfire approaching Watson Lake and Upper Leard. However, that does not mean that that has to be the only benefit that we get from fuel management close to our communities. And so I've got two pictures up on this slide. On the left-hand side is a picture of a cleared fuel, uh, management area in White Horse. And afterwards, staff have gone back and planted raspberry bushes. And in the future, that place is going to provide food for humans and wildlife alike. So that's another benefit that we could get out of these areas that we're clearing and we're reducing fuels within. The second picture is in Watson Lake itself, the Y Lake Trail, which has undergone fire smart treatments in the past. There are many areas that have already undergone fuel management in and around Watson Lake and Upper Leard that have many benefits for the community outside of creating better preparedness for wildfire, reducing wildfire risk. The trails along Y Lake, I think, are made better for the fire smart treatment. It's nice, open pine and, uh, spruce and aspen forest, uh, wonderful sightlines of the lake. That is a huge benefit to our community. We also have the north and south, uh, fuel breaks that people use. I know I use it to walk my dog. Um, people go skiing, they hike, they use their quads, uh, snowmobiles on those trails. It's, it's awesome to have them close to Watson Lake. We also have two disc golf courses in town and one, uh, in Raven Hill, uh, is within a fire smart treatment. Picture playing disc golf in a dense forest that hasn't undergone this treatment. You basically couldn't, you couldn't throw a disc through those trees. And so that's another benefit that we already have from fuel management here. And I think that opens up, uh, the chance for us to And I think that opens up uh the chance for us to dream big and imagine what other benefits we could derive from proposed fuel management that will reduce our risk uh from wildfire. And so we've got some ideas for that. Uh first and foremost, which we heard last night is a a major thing for the community, is access to firewood and timber for community use. That could be a a big co-benefit from fuel management treatments near Watson Lake and Upper Lyard. We could also go back and plant less flammable food plants such as raspberries, sulberry, Saskatoon berry, so that it's a place that wildlife can reliably get food, that we can go out and gather food from. Uh a really great example, this is already happening in the Yukon, it's so exciting, in Teslin, um as part of their community wildfire protection plan. So we can borrow those ideas from our neighbors who are doing things very successfully. Um we could create a community garden in that space. Or we could add more recreation trails and sports fields, a baseball diamond, uh more disc golf, um biking trails, uh anything like that. And more centric to our organization, wildland fire management, we could use the area for firefighting firefighter training and um for wildfire research, which is always improving the way that we interact with fire, both in suppression and preparing. And so really, like, the world is our oyster here, and we're really hoping that we can get some cool ideas from the community about what these areas could be beyond a place to reduce our risk. So with that, um we're gonna end our presentation, but our contact information is on this slide. We're really looking forward for your feedback. Thank you so much to the sixty-ish people that came out last night. Uh it's so awesome to see how many people care about this and uh want to make a difference in their community. Um we will have more resources coming out soon about fire smart and what you can do on your individual private properties. But we are gonna be working hard, be hot into the scenes here to also do fuel management around the communities and hopefully with your help and feedback. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for for listening, and we're looking forward to hearing from you.